Getting started, again, my name is Craig Rupp, Mayor of the City of Laurel. I just want to remind everyone again, if you would sign the sign machine when you enter the door, when you leave tonight, we appreciate that. So keep track of who's here and provide information in the future as well. I do want to acknowledge both our city council, Council members here with us, and everybody in here. Also, some of our city staff, City Executive, our City Administrator, Mr. Mills, our Deputy City Administrator, Marty Fluddian, and we'll be here for a few moments. Paul McCollum is our Public Works Director. The Deputy Police Chief is Jimmy Brooks in the back. Marty Lawrence is our Director for Communications. We are taking this, or again, when we start with questions, we can have somebody else ask us. As well, the Parking Lot's Director is Marty Klotzke. Our Deputy Director of Planning is Attorney Enforcement Jack Brock. Ryan Louts, our Deputy Director of Information Technology is in the back as well. Terry Thompson is our Emergency Services Specialist, which is right here. Tonight is your opportunity to listen and ask questions. Tonight, we would ask again, I'm going to move this microphone over to that podium as we move through the program, and if you have questions, we'd ask that you use the microphone as well. Let me also acknowledge Board Council, Jimmy Cross is here with us as well as Rick Wilson and everybody here as well. The, tonight is an opportunity for you to see what went on April the 30th and May the 1st in the City of Laurel. Marty's giving you a presentation, about 25, 30 minutes, small. We give everybody the opportunity to ask questions, we give everybody the opportunity to say what's on their mind. I can tell you that you will be, you may not be able to answer every question, but we will get back to it. The City of Laurel Insurance Company has been notified, and we have put WSSC on notification that you may file suit. So there are certain things that we may or may not say throughout the evening. Marty's got a very good presentation. We've got a lot of different emails, a lot of different phone calls during these events. Several people have asked about why we were always trying to evacuate certain areas in the city. And we'll see tonight what's going on. Well, as good as the information that is provided to us, we always side on the air with a side of caution. I would rather wake somebody up at 3:00 in the morning, my friendly, and ask them to move to another location than to have something bad happen to them. That's what we've always done here in the City of Laurel, as we move through other emergency, emergency as well. What we don't want to do, and we're trying to make sure people understand, is we don't want to be the one always yelling chicken, because we'll constantly ask, we had several different flooding events, it's all now within a 13-month period, where we asked people to evacuate, and then nothing occurred. And that does concern me, as an occupant of the city of Laurel, that we constantly ask people to do certain things, and things don't always occur the way they told them they know they'll occur. So we're going to try to give you what information we have provided, we're able to provide to you tonight, Marty. Let me also thank the many volunteers who came out, and there are certain members of this alumni, members of our city council throughout, throughout the union as well. Very proud of the work that our city forces did, it is a long, it was a long day for many, two or three days for others, and I think they performed well, they did well, and I just want to hold the knowledge for them, that most of those people that are here, that are here tonight, and again, just want to thank them for all the work they did. Particularly, I want to thank Marty Fluddian, Marty is our Deputy City Administrator, Marty has been with the city a long time, he was our Public Works Director, he knows the City of Laurel very well, and what he can and can't do, and kind of knows sometimes when it's flooding, because he was sent to me back in the 70s, and some other things that he reminds me about, this is what occurred. So that knowledge is very important when we're dealing with emergencies, especially with all different powers that we have. Marty continues to do an outstanding job on our emergency services side of all our public services, and that's why I'm thanking him. He's going to now, I'm going to turn it over to Marty Fluddian, I'm going to ask Marty to give you the presentation, and then we'll go with some questions and semantics, if you just have a general topic that you want to bring up. And I did want to say that we have met, Mr. Fluddian and others have met with our federal, our delegation in DC, Don Edwards from the State Department, they've gone down and met with their staffs and them as well, as well as our state officials, our Senator, delegates, our Department of Energy, Department of Transit, they've been very involved with us, and very interested in who comes out and comments and happens. And we plan to work with them in an apples and then from accessionals, and things we may improve some of the things we've been putting through here lately. So that's it, again, Marty, thank you. I'm sorry, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, welcome to Partnership Hall, extending my sincere appreciation for everybody taking the time out, with busy schedules to come in here this afternoon. You're going to get a very catchable picture of what occurred during this flood event, and I'm going to give you a little bit of dam 101, if you will, and you're certainly not going to be my quality engineers who we be here, but you might have a better understanding of what the Washington Forest Santer Commission, what is known as WSSC, and the City of Laurel deal with when we have significant rain runs up into this. This is a picture of the dam, somewhat used to be rare, but anymore, it's becoming a common occurrence, you see every gate open on Duckett Dam, and when that happens, obviously we're downstream, and we have a lot of concerns during a recurrence of this. Okay, the Tuxton River, this is the White River, it empties into the Justin Bay, but starts way up, just out of the northern end of Howard County, out of the northern Howard County you can get. That picture represents the river at rest, if you will, and the others are an angry river. Provides some information, this information is also in the handouts, I'm not really going to go into a whole lot of detail here, but this is basically a vision of the Rocky Ford Reservoir and the T. Howard Duckett Dam. What I would like to focus on is the watershed area here, 132 square miles, and the 527 million gallons of water that the reservoir has to pass to go home back. By Delta Reservoir, which is about 10 miles northwest of the city, this reservoir also feeds into the Tuxton River, and ultimately comes down to Rocky Ford, and affects the operations of the Duckett Dam. This reservoir has a watershed area of 78.4 miles, and has a capacity of 6.4 billion gallons. When I speak of watershed area, if you can imagine a bowl with a spout on one end of it, and a lot of people around the bowl, each with a glass of water pouring the water into the bowl, when the water gets filled, it goes to one spot and empties out. Basically, that's, that's a watershed area. You have geographically a hole here, and all of this during a rainstorm funnels the water down to rivers and streams, ultimately enters into, in our case, the Tuxton River, and is checked by a dam at the end of the river. The total watershed area that we deal with, with both of these reservoirs, is 210.4 square miles. That's a big watershed area. The total potential of water coming down from these two structures is 12.1 billion gallons. That is a lot of water, and it has the potential to do a lot of destruction, and certainly can cause a loss of a lot of life. Some of the questions I get about the dam itself is, people will drive by the dam on 95, and they'll see that some of the gates are open, and it's been dry, no rain shed in the immediate Laurel area. Well, when we speak about watershed, if you have a significant storm, and these happen fairly frequently, and because of nature, I'm not going to global warming or anything like that, but these storms are becoming more and more frequent, more and more severe. So a lot of these, if you track weather, a lot of these float by us to the northwest, and they don't really affect us as far as global warming, but they're dumping a lot of water into the Tuxton River watershed, and ultimately that reaches Duckett Dam. So when Duckett Dam reaches a certain capacity, they do what is called deep watering, they'll open up some gates and let water out. So when you, when you see the dam has been dry, and water's coming out of it, that's Other factors that affect flooding in the City of Laurel, the day before yesterday, we had torrential rainfall. My rain gauge in my backyard was torn out, and that water came down, and it fairly short in timeframe, and adversely impacted the storm rain systems in and around the City of Laurel. I got a call from the Washington Forest Santer Commission about 11:30 that morning, and they said, just wanted to let you know that all the water that is coming down the river is local runoff, we don't, we're not releasing a drop of water. So everything that you saw the day before yesterday was local runoff. WSSC was not adding anything to that. And if you've driven around town, look at some of the photographs that are available online, we had some areas in the City of Laurel that were flooded, to the point where I haven't seen since Agnes, since I was in 1972, a lot of water. This is one of the pictures, this is the commuter parking lot down in the City of the American Avenue, Frank Treger's, Frank Fluddian, watch out, come out. So when we have local runoff issues, without WSSC's input, we had some significant issues to deal with the day before yesterday. Now, if you take and you add to, WSSC having to deep water, at the same time we're getting local runoff, that doubles our trouble. WSSC, the City of Laurel, work very closely to try and balance the discharge of water at the dam versus our local runoff. Fairly frequently, you'll see Riverfront Park being closed, because the capacity provided by that park, as far as water storage and water runoff, is needed to handle what WSSC is discharging versus what we're putting out from our local storm systems. Other factors are dry versus saturated soils, not by dry old parched, but reasonably dry soil, has the potential to capture a lot of storm rain or storm water, and hold that storm water, and basically either convert that water to groundwater, or when it, when it does reach saturation, that water will, will runoff, and head for the nearest downstream inlet, to ultimately drain the river. But, on several different occasions, and the storm that we're here to discuss this evening, we had saturated soils. Basically, those soils did not hold any more water, so everything that came down in that storm was immediately converted to runoff, and was headed for storm rains. So we were not getting any retention from the soils in and around the City of Laurel. This is one of my favorite photographs, courtesy of WSSC, I took that to a beautiful picture of Duckett Dam, and a fairly large portion of the reservoir. The dam itself, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail here, again, it's contained in the handout. I would like to point out that I get a lot of questions about the American Department of Environment rating this a high hazard dam, and people ask, why is that, what was to do with that? Basically, if we were to, or WSSC were to suffer a catastrophic failure of that dam, the potential for downstream loss of life and property is very high, which is why this is considered a high hazard dam. I would like to point out that these are all the gates that are operated to either stop the water, discharge the water, and the process is fairly slow. There's rail here, basically, there is what they call a mule that rides on rails over each gate, and there's a series of chains that they hook up at each gate to open or lower the gates. And so it's a cumbersome process, if they were to open all seven gates at one time to manage that, we're talking about roughly about an hour, 45 minutes before they can get all those gates open with the unit. This area here, I'm going to come back to very shortly, but there is some construction activity going on in the dam, and it's been going on for quite a while, driven by the dam on a fairly frequent basis. What the Washington Forest Santer Commission is doing here, and I'll go back to this photo here, is their engineers have determined that these wing walls, when, and if you can see, they're somewhat lower than the tan gates that hold back the water, these have the potential of being topped before the main structure of the dam. And what they're doing, construction wise, down here at the foot of the dam, is they're increasing the spillway, increasing the capacity and the size of the spillway. Prior to the activity going on, when water reaches a certain depth, and you can see this area here on the other side, that's part of the reservoir, it's dry because the reservoir dropped in. But when the reservoir is at deep capacity, there is a potential of sudden rainfall for a sudden infill of water. That could push water around these end walls, and go straight to the foot of the dam. Now, the spillways that were originally built were designed for that, but they were determined later to be under capacity. So the activity that's going on now is to increase the size of spillways. Unshed, water coming around these winds will basically erode the earth that is holding up those portions of the dam, and as they give way, everybody needs to head to the hills. The dam operations, and I show you this, this graphic for reading. Back in 1972, during Hurricane Agnes, when the elected officials and the manager and management team from WSSC got together and discussed the operations of the dam. Prior to the rainfall from Agnes, when it got to Laurel, it wasn't a hurricane, it was tropical storm Agnes, but WSSC was free to maintain as much capacity, water capacity, behind that dam wall as possible. Now, you have to understand one thing, this is a pot of water dam. WSSC has these dams in place to trap water that ultimately comes to the sink, just pickets in your own. So this water here has a value, and I'll explain that value shortly, but as a result of the damage that we suffer after tropical storm Agnes did its work in Laurel. WSSC was required to maintain three feet of freeboard, and by freeboard, I mean, they no longer have the authorization to bring the water level up to as high as that dam will allow from structural failure. They have to hold it back three feet from that point to give it additional capacity in the event of a sudden rainfall like we had the other day. So that three feet of freeboard is intended to buy capacity, and therefore buy time for the local runoff from the City of Laurel to go through the systems and go down the river before WSSC has opened the gates. Now, once the water leaves the dam, obviously, we're concerned about it, WSSC is concerned about it, several other agencies, the State Highway Administration have concerns about it. There are several stations along the river and the watershed that allow for monitoring of the elevation of the water in the reservoir and the elevation of the river downstream from the dam. And what that information tells us is that, it tells us the volume of water that's coming down into the reservoir, and ultimately the volume of water that's coming into the river, and how fast that water's getting there, and allows us to predict certain elevations, flood elevations, and at what time, roughly what time they're going to occur. So there are a series of these monitoring stations, we have manual ones where we actually go out and observe by sight, we have electronic ones, this is a hardwired, and this is a wireless measuring station, and we, at the City of Laurel, during flood events, our Public Works Department, our Police Department, basically become our eyes and ears for the elevations of the river as predicted by the Washington Forest Santer. It's not that we don't trust the data that we're getting from the commission, but we want an extra set of eyes on it, just as a backup. WSSC often will put their own teams out there to monitor the river. Their thought process there is that they're there to check on local runoff, and how that local runoff is being impacted by the water that's being discharged out of there. At the start of an event, WSSC operations will notify our communications that there are issues. Our communications will notify the senior emergency management staff. We internally will establish directly communications with WSSC, so that we can manage the event. One of the first things we do is critical flood notification. These are just some of the areas that we frequently knock on their doors and get updated contact information, because these areas are in what we call critical floodplain areas. So these businesses and some residents are subject to catastrophic issues fairly early in the event, so that's why we maintain a list of contact information for these people. And we also have what we call, we call reverse 911, technically not a reverse 911, we have an auto dial system that we contract with, and that auto dial system takes care of calling everybody else in the impacted areas. But these are the ones that we call manually, just to make sure that they have, they're aware of it, and their reaction to the issues. We also provide backup communications with all the other jurisdictions that we deal with, State Highway, Annapolis County, Howard County, Frenchburg County, and in some cases, Montgomery County. These are all agreed upon notification lists that WSSC has, but they haven't in the past slipped up and not made notifications. So we follow that up on our own, just to make sure that these agencies are aware of it. This is the rain event, basically the order of events, and I'm not going to go through everything step by step, but there are some, some pertinent information I want to bring out this evening. On Sunday, April 27th, we received notification from WSSC and Maryland Civil Operations Center that WSSC was deep watering the dam. Now, there is a controversy over whether that in fact occurred. We didn't go out and put eyes on the dam itself, but the information was posted into our police communications section, and this is the information that's pulled directly from our commuter aid and dispatch system. So whether it was actually happening or not, that's, I don't have the dog in that fight, but we were notified that they were in fact in water. Monday, April 28th, National Weather Service issued the prediction for kovias amounts of rain. (Inaudible) April 29th, we, at 5:00, we closed Riverfront Park. Had we notified Mark Rail that we were closing the parking lot at 9:00 that evening. On April 30th, the mayor declared a precautionary local state of emergency, and that is based on the predictions from the National Weather Service, as well as information we were getting from the WSSC. At 4:30 that same day, our Emergency Operations Center staffed it with the appropriate departments responsible for flood response, and we staged Public Works equipment, as well as equipment at our shelters. Okay, Wednesday, April 30th, at 10:15 PM, after discussions with WSSC engineers, this was kind of what we were thinking was the tail end of the event. We had, we had kovias amounts of rain, as they predicted, we had basically survived that, if you will, and we had, obviously, our park was impacted, the commuter parking lot was impacted, but the rain was tapering off, and the Washington Forest Santer Commission entered into discussions with us, and based on the information we got, we decided that we were going to start stepping down our response to this event. We did check out the Emergency Operations Center, but when we did that, we posted monitors along the river, just to make sure that we had eyes on the river, that we had been in a position to immediately notify us if something wrong, well, something wrong. At 10:50 PM, WSSC notified the city that a Level 2 dam emergency was declared. WSSC advised the city that we needed to evacuate areas based on 6,000 cubic foot per second inundation map, and I'll get to that in a second. WSSC advised that they were going to have to release a lot of water to get water level below a ceiling of the dam that was flooding a critical area at the foot of the dam, with the instructions taken place. This is a inundation map that is provided by the Washington Forest Santer Commission. This is a fairly recent map, and when we first got this, it was a very accurate map. Even the mayor had drawn out with GPS plotter, that we had, basically were able to plot by standing at the river's edge. Were able to plot and verify that the inundation areas that were identified on this map were very accurate, to within feet, in some places to within inches. So the WSSC advised that they were going to release water at the range of 6,000 cubic feet per second. When we get that information, we look at the chart here, the key, and we compare that to the area within the city that the key indicates is going to be impacted. This is very important. This is where we made the decision about what areas need to be evacuated. When I got the call from the WSSC, they advised us that we had 15 minutes before the first wall of water reached the City of Laurel. Suffice it to say, my heart was in my throat, but we managed to react and respond fairly quickly, and we had reviewed this plan fairly quickly, and set up a three-phase evacuation process. Basically, we started with everything that was north of Main Street as our first phase, and the second and third phase would ultimately get us down to Laurel Island. Now, even during Agnes, I never saw water near Laurel Island, but based on the information we get from these inundation maps, and based on the accuracy that we proved ourselves, we basically felt that, based on the flow rate that WSSC gave us, that those areas were going to be impacted. As it turned out, very few properties, except for some of the commercial businesses and the parking lot, had the eastern end of Main Street were adversely affected. We had water at the Frank Treger dealership, we had water, we had 2.5 cubic water in the Andrew Transmission dealership, there was a car parking lot- water in the Andrew Transmission dealership, there was a car parking lot in that vicinity that was inundated, several cars were inundated, and we had the Fred Frederick Auto Shops on the other side of the east side of the river. They were inundated with water, a car rental dealership back to back. And we had water up to the very first step of the American Legion. I've seen it up there before, but very rarely have I seen water come up to the first step of the American Legion main entrance. So the reason that these were given, and I am not a structural engineer, but from what I got from the information provided by WSSC, if you look closely at the top of the dam here, there is basically a roadway. And roadway can support the light truck traffic, and it's also there for the employees of WSSC to walk across the dam. Now, when the dam was constructed, and allow me to go back. When the dam was constructed, this being the top of the dam itself, the top of the dam structure, the roadway I'm talking about was poured on top of this, and it's not a common construction. The method was not unsafe at all. But what occurred, according to the Washington Civil Emergency Commission, was that a construction seam, and that's basically what you get when you have a piece of concrete that's poured a week ago, a month ago, whatever it is, and then you lay another piece of concrete on top of it, you get a construction seam. We were told that the water had come up to the point where the seam along this deck was basically underwater. And water had found its way through an opening in the seam and was falling down this wall here. It was falling into an open excavation by one of these buttresses. If you're familiar with buttresses, they're basically the element that holds the dam together. So what it was doing was it was eroding soil away from the buttresses. So WSSC was concerned that that could catastrophically affect the structural integrity of the dam. And because of that, that is why they went to a level-two dam emergency, and that's why they opened up all the gates to de-water as soon as humanly possible, the object, to get the water below that seam as soon as possible. They were very successful. However, we paid for their success. Now, on Wednesday, April 30th, at 11:05 PM, that's basically when we made the notifications for our emergency operations staff to start the mandatory evacuation. Now, we basically had about 31 people that absolutely refused to go, and we had slightly over 100 that actually went to the R. J. Petri Community Center, and they were sheltered there. And one of the concerns I received was from some of the evacuees was that the shelter wasn't what they thought it was going to be. Basically, we did not have a cafeteria for them to heat at, we did not have the library for them to read books, we did not have television for them to sit down and watch TV. And that basically is not what we do when we open a shelter. What we're opening a shelter is to get people out of harm's way as soon as humanly possible and get them under roots protected. We work with the American Red Cross fairly closely, and in this event, we had notified the American Red Cross to come out to assist us. They're basically the ones that provide food. Ultimately, our shelters are just a stopoff for evacuees on the way to a more permanent shelter. We may be moving them to more comfortable quarters that French Forest County might provide. They might be going to home with relatives, or they might be going to a hotel. But our shelter is really not there to provide future conferences. It's there to give people out of harm's way and protect them as soon as possible. So water impacts, as I related before, occurred in these areas here. We did have, we did go through the emergency portal notification process as I alluded to. We did have some issues. We failed to keep contact with Anquan Transmission and Laurel, Laurel and U-Haul dealership. So immediately after this event, we went back out and updated our contact information and worked with the owners of those businesses to make sure in the future that if they change contact, emergency contact information, to make sure that they'll get it. Okay, Thursday, May 1st, at 4:30, the evacuation was completed. And Thursday, May 1st, at 4:30, up from 4:30 to 8:00, all evacuees were returned to their homes. On May 5th, at 9 o'clock, a local state of emergency was declared by the mayor. And actually, on the first was basically when we started coming out of harm's way, but we generally keep emergency action in place while after the event, the understanding that there may be a precedent for the declaration of the disaster. And a lot of the work that we do after the event, we qualify for these funds, but only if we're under an actual state of emergency, which is why this event, for us, went on to the fifth. This is the extent of the flooded invasion from everything that went right and went home. Again, the information that we got was very accurate, when we plotted that and provided GPS information electronically, sending that data back to the city. However, this map, which the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner, which were great effort and great expense to produce, is now worthless. It is absolutely worthless. And I say that because the river is crowded with what we call snags, and these are trees, debris, branches that are laying across or in the river, and those snags empty the flow of water to the point where that water starts backing upstream. And these snags, most of which are downstream from the city, they impound that water and they push that water back, and they basically render the maps that we have useless. We can no longer use them anymore because the maps were generated when there were no snags in the river. The City of Laurel, immediately after this event, we spent roughly about $55,000 of our own money to remove some of the more significant snags in the river. However, by my estimation, there are still 27 snags downstream from the City of Laurel that need to be removed. We don't have the money to do that. We have talked to other agencies, all the way up to the Corps of Engineers, and everybody's basically ready, willing, and able to provide us with advice, but they're all crying poor mouths. We don't have any money anymore. So it is very vital for us to get these removed, so because of that, we started dealing with our elected officials all the way to the federal level. We've had discussions with all of them related to this event, and we have basically provided them with our rough costs, and these costs are still not final yet, but between a quarter million dollars and $33,000 just from the City of Laurel alone. This says nothing about the local businesses that come back. We don't have that data. The cost to remove the rest of the snags in the rivers are still being obtained. Mike Losky and his crew are basically working with several contractors to develop a cost estimate to have all these removed. At some point in time, they are going to have to be removed, or we're going to have to take these inundation maps and revise them ourselves so that we can adequately respond to random events such as what occurred the day before yesterday, but again, as I said, WSSC is not part of Marshall. These are some of the pictures of that event. We worked with Howard County. We were able to get Howard County to fly one of our offers and take some of these overhead shots. But you can see, snags, 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 all up and down the river. We also have trees that believe a bit, but I couldn't look square. We had trees that were on state leaning trees. We had trees where you could look underneath it and see the entire root system and see daylight on the other side. This was all brought about by the control of the water. We had some damage, State Highway had damage to some false work underneath the fourth and or southbound Route 1 bridge. All that was washed out from underneath the river. Much to our strength, it took State Highway over a week to respond to this. We couldn't even get State Highway out during the event to block Route 1. We had to work with Howard County to get their police officer on the other side to help us block off Route 1. So we've had discussions with State Highway and assurances from them that that will not occur in the future. But even some of the, well, we ran into issues. We still have issues, but WSSC refuses. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, we met with the general manager and his staff from the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner, Mary Johnson, and he basically told us that they were not responsible for anything that occurred downstream. They were not, they didn't come out and actually say this, but basically the gist of it was they're not going to let a finger to help us out. So even though we consider what occurred to be a flaw in their structure, and that flaw brought about this dam, WSSC is basically like, you can't touch us. Have a nice day. We have concerns that were generated all the way back in 1972 for Agus over how the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner operates that dam. Now, the Maryland Department of Environment is responsible for dam safety. They're responsible to go out there and make sure that that dam is structurally sound. But the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner has the sole ultimate authority on how that dam is operated. There is no oversight from any agency over how the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner operates that dam. That's a big concern for us. So as the mayor mentioned earlier, we're dealing with our elected officials all the way up to the top, trying to get some pressure to basically have the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner's charter amended so that there is at least some oversight from the Maryland Department of Guard or other agency that has the wherewithal to understand the operation of the dam. These are some of the elected officials we briefed out to. I can swear to you that we met with all of them personally, but we had them with their staff, the 21st delegation, they met with us and subsequently meeting with the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner where they tried to explain to us what occurred on their end. And that, ladies and gentlemen...
I think you might have a seat.
Anybody here from the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner? They were invited to come to this meeting and participate. They chose not to. So that, ladies and gentlemen, is in a nutshell what occurred. Basically, leave you some insight on how we work with the Washington Civil Emergency Commissioner and how we try and respond to events and how this event was expected to eliminate or reduce the level of damage. It wasn't successful in the life of the dam. We are mindful that of no loss of life, and the mayor said earlier, when we evacuate people, that is a decision that we do not make lightly. We understand that getting people up in the middle of the night is just not, not a very welcome thing. And our office will knock on the door and say, hey, you gotta leave. Some of the responses they get are for the looks. Having said all that, ladies and gentlemen, I'll take any questions that you might have. Oh, I'm sorry. If I can give our camera lady about a minute or two to move her camera. She's been focusing on this event.
We would ask you to step up to the podium so that we can get this all on camera and audio. This will be rebroadcast over our local cable network. Yes, sir.
Fantastic presentation. I appreciate it. My question goes to the two dams system. When I was on the council a hundred years ago, we were getting the new maps done, if you recall back in, around 2001, 2002.
We're still working on them.
And at that time, I remember, WSSC, we had a similar issue. We were getting an opportunity to go visit WSSC. And basically, what I took away from that meeting is the interaction between Brighton Dam and Duckett Dam, the give and take on those in a crisis situation. Their hydraulic folks said, we don't have them. Has that been cleared up? Is there more understanding on how those two dams would work? In other words, if Brighton failed, would Duckett automatically go?
Well...
And I know you're, I don't mean to butcher, I'm not asking for an opinion, but the question is, is their models at that time could not account for it?
Well, you're absolutely right. The issue that we had when you were serving on the council still follows us today. The maps that you had just referenced are not scheduled to be adopted until February. Is that where we're at, Jack? February 2015?
July.
July. Okay, so that safe project has been kicked around since you were on the council and still not resolved. And one of the biggest issues we had that affects our flood rate insurance map policies and programs is those upstream dams. The Corps of Engineers, in working with the consultants to analyze our flood lane, they basically had to hire a subconsultant to write a new software program to model what happens in the Patuxent River. Because basically, we have these two dam structures that affect the flood levels in and around the City of Laurel, and we had no similar situation in the country for them to use as a model. So they kicked that around, and they finally came up with a model to use. However, that model is subject to the operations of the dams, and there is no dam oversight. So...
Literally.
Literally. The, sorry. Without that oversight, we, basically, what we have are puddle dams. They're holding back drinking water. WSSC will tell you till they're blue in the face. These are not flood control devices. Well, call them what you want, they are flood control devices. WSSC works with us to try and balance the discharge of the dam versus the local runoff. So in that, in that respect, they're helping us to address flood levels, but there's no guarantee that they're going to do that. They don't have to do that for us. They can operate those dams any way they want. So because of that issue, the puddle versus flood control, it's taken this long to revise the maps. The current maps that we use for development were adopted in 1985. That's unheard of. But because of this situation, that's where we're at.
So I just, I appreciate all that, and I know that the mayor and the council have been working with, you know, state and federal officials, but, you know, one thing to keep in mind, right, we've dealt with a fairly energetic earthquake event that was rather relatively rare for us. We're seeing more energetic storms projected out for the future, and, you know, at some point, we're going to have to get control. So, you know, we don't need to arbitrate this year, but it's... So, you know, we don't need to arbitrate this year, but at some point in time, you know, feds and state governors are going to somehow have to do something legislatively. And it's not just us. I mean, there are other towns in that downstream that must be dealing with the same thing. So I thank you guys for putting this on. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One of the other things that we're working with, we would like to have the WSSC consider is, you'll recall, I was talking about that three feet of freeboard for the reservoir level versus the outfalls of the dam. We would like to see that decrease to sixty. Primarily because of all the development that has occurred since nineteen seventy-two upstream. And you have to understand that a lot of that development occurred without any stormwater retention regulations being in place. They have stormwater retention regulations in place right now, but so much of that development occurred without it. So many parking lots were built that are impervious to rainwater now. And all that is coming directly to the watershed without anything holding it up, without anything delaying it to lessen the impact for us downstream. One of the other things is WSSC has eight hundred and sixty-six thousand clients, if you will, that benefit from drinking water. Well, in some respects, if you look at it from my point of view, we're paying, we're paying for these people to have the privilege of drinking clean drinking water. Those dams are providing that water for them. And when the dams don't work right or work the way we want them to, we pay for it. We suffer. But WSSC is certainly ignore that. Mr. Frederick, sir.
I want to thank the city and everybody who participated in trying to manage this situation. This certainly isn't our first rodeo. We've been here before. The current WSSC was never as arrogant as they are today. And I would like to see the city elevate this up to the federal level because the river is plugged up. The reason that it flooded yesterday is because the river has no place to go. And the WSSC before has always used the excuse that there was a breach in the dam. They used that in nineteen seventy-two. And my question to them was, what have you done to fix it since nineteen seventy-two? And they haven't done anything. So I would encourage the city to elevate this situation to the federal level and just keep doing it until someone responds. Because yesterday, we would have, before, we would have never had it happen. But because the silt and the trash and everything in the river, it doesn't have anywhere to go. And if there really was a catastrophe, I can tell you right now, there's not four feet of water in the river below the dam. The dam is full. This is a rainy season. They should lower the capacity in both of those dams so, just during the rainy season, so that they can handle the influx of the water that we get anyway. So I would encourage the city. I wrote the governor. I can tell you, the citizens of the city of Laurel should be thankful. I wrote the governor, secretary of transportation. I think there were fourteen letters. I wrote certified. The only people that responded was the city of Laurel. And they were on the site and represented the community. I want to tell you that I appreciate it and I think every citizen there appreciates it as well. I sent the chairman of the sanitary commission a letter inviting him to inspect the damage on May the thirteenth. He wrote me back immediately and told me that Jerry Johnson would immediately be in contact with me. That was May the thirteenth. I've yet to ever lay eyes or hear from Jerry Johnson. So that's what you've got to contend with. So you've got, in my opinion, you've got to go above and beyond those people. And again, thank you for being as responsive as you could be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Would you please identify yourself and address your position, just because we're taking this.
Okay. Jeff Mills, Laurel resident business owner, right on Main Street. And I also work for S H A. So I heard about this event on T O P radio station. I had to get down here because I'm out there on those water events. And so this map, I read this presentation very well, put together. And what I'll do is I'll take this to my job because it helps. I live, I live here and work here also. And I'm one of those ones that are out there shutting the roads down and everything like that. That, the day of those many different water events is, it's like they say, hassle because we're short staffed right now as far as S H A. We don't have a leader right now, resident manager right now. We have like a floating resident manager. So the area is kind of unfamiliar to the float resident manager. So we, as a staff, are hollering about everywhere. Even down in Amityville, it gets flooded down there all the time.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, yeah, that's because of a beaver, you know. And so.
That's ransom very active.
Yeah. So that is one of the problems also that I know personally down there. I'm not sure about the Potucks River.
We have quite a few beaver families in the Potucks River.
Okay. So that probably, you know.
And they're experts at building dams.
Right. One last thing is, you said something that kind of caught my ear as far as like legal. When you said that, like, there's not an I on WSSC as far as the dam itself. Well, the difference with the runoff and them releasing the dam. How would possibly, would they possibly, would they admit that there was a runoff or was it them releasing the dam? I mean, how can Laurel, as us being, you know, we live here, definitely don't want to be, you know, drowned. How could they, or how could we prove that they released the dam or it was just an act of nature?
Well, the Washington Department of Sanitation, they, they do have gauges that track the amount of water that comes out of the dam. They can tell you within a couple hundred gallons of water, how much they reduce. So based on that, they can, they can run the computations and determine what their downstream impacts were. What we don't have is, we don't have the ability to measure the outflow of our local storm drain system. We, we know what the capacities are. We can make assumptions that the capacities were either at their limit or exceeded to get a rough number as far as local runoff goes. But that is one of the elements in the formula that we use to try and predict the level of the floodwater. That is, that's, that's our weak link, if you will.
As low as possible.
As low as we. Right. And you have to understand, the storm drain systems in French Georgia County belong to French Georgia County. They don't belong to the city of Laurel. So we, we don't readily exchange information with French Georgia County on the frequency that they maintain the systems. Because, you know, if you have, if you have a storm drain system that the pipe is halfway clogged, that's half of your capacity. So our crews, our WS, our public works crews frequently, at least twice a year, go out and clean storm drain systems, but we don't clean them all. We just don't have the resources to do that. So the, the numbers for local runoff that get plugged into the formula to determine the flood elevation is, like I said, it's the weak link of the chain. It's, it's better than a guestment, but not much.
Jeff, the other thing is, we, we go by and look at the dam from ninety-five. Terry, yesterday, we were talking about all the runoff, just to make sure they weren't over the dam. The editor people tell us, they were, they were on site and tell us they weren't over the dam as well. Terry actually notified, so we go and check that as well now. So a lot, a lot of times we need to have our police officers and local officers. We were checking that yesterday with my example. It was all bottom. So we were.
But my, my, my question is, how can Laurel prove? Because, I mean, if we want to point the finger at WSSC, how can we prove? Because we have, when you go to court, you have to come with the facts.
I'm pretty good at Jacob Flavon's video, man. I got quite a bit of funny going on. Thank you all for working on this.
I mean, you may, but what I'm, my question, what I'm saying is that, is that we may have photos, which you have right here in this pack. But how can those photos prove that that was runoff or them releasing the, releasing that?
During the recent local runoff storm, I'll call it, we went to the dam, we looked at the dam. All the gates were closed. They were not releasing any water. So that, that has proved positive that they were not impacting the, the flood levels from the storm that occurred the other day. That was all local runoff. We have confirmed that.
Yeah, but the city of Laurel is not suing because of this last.
Oh, no.
Right. We're talking about that with Mr. Frederick.
Well, let's be, let's be clear. When we closed our emergency operations center at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock that night, we were good. We did a lot of different things. We have some technical, technology that we were a pinpoint mark, as Marty said, we checked on it. When our damage occurred was when the gates were open and we got fifteen minutes ago. That's when it occurred. And I'm pretty sure.
That would be the source right there.
I left my house, which is less than a mile away, and went to what we call a sewer point down at nine street. And it was at the top of that river already. So he notified me and I left my house ten minutes later.
So that would be the same, pretty much the same evidence that this.
The gates were done when they opened the gates. Absolutely.
Well, also, a couple of what the mayor said, the WSSC admitted to it, that they admitted that the opening all the gates at once is what caused the majority of the damage. But they also provided us with a report on all their flow rates. We can tell you exactly how much they released during that entire event. We have that report to handle that.
Can you correct me on one thing? They admitted they opened the gates. That's as far as they.
Well.
See, yeah. You need that, you need that right. Just, just over the phone, that's mayor Hearsay.
Now, we have, we have a copy of their report. Signed, tuned, delivered.
Oh, well. So those businesses, those businesses that, like, Mr. Frederick, perhaps might need that as well. Because that's, that's a total separate lawsuit, just himself.
Our insurance company's been notified and we're, you know, when the time comes, I'm sure they'll reach out to others and need to be, you know.
I would encourage you, if you could, since you work with state highway, if you can talk to Terry Thompson, he's our emergency operation coordinator. If you could just exchange your contact information with him, we'd love to touch base with you.
All right. Well, that's, that's enough, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate you very much. Yes, sir.
Glenn Spiegel, seven nail place. I think Howard County Dam is built for Prince George and Montgomery County, mostly for water and hydrants and everything else. But in this picture here, and I've worked in the construction business for a good many years. And we had a, we have a spec book. And the spec book always mentioned the hundred-year flood plan. Now, I don't know where we are on the hundred-year flood plan, but I think it's above the, so. But in this picture here, I was watching, I seen it up there. Everything on the Howard County side was all built up. Now, if we have, if we have a plan that says you can't build if it's going to cause damage to someone else. Now, I don't know what a hundred-year flood, flood plan exists anymore. I don't believe it does. But there's something wrong somewhere if we can't take care of the streams and the rivers. Because I've worked around them and WSSC has always, when I asked them, I said, there's a thing, there's a spot over here that needs cleaned up. They tell me, okay, after dark, or after everybody goes home, you go over and tear it out. Get that stuff out of the river. And that's what we done. We done a job. And that's what we have to do. We can't sit around and say, oh, that's EPA point at it. That's what EPA does, points at it. There's a mess there. I work in all these creeks and rivers and everything, and they're a mess, a damn mess. And I'm, and there's beavers and shoot the trees up. And I've worked up at Rock Creek, Point, there's houses everywhere, buildings, beavers running around cutting trees down. And we're, we're inside of areas that's fenced off and weaky and scarred tree outside that area. But the beavers are eating the damn things and they're falling in the creek. Now, that don't make no sense that we're just keep beating ourselves around and talking if you're not going to clean the rivers and streams up. They need help. It's called Mother Nature. That's all it is. And I've told Howard County and all of them, it's Mother Nature. She'll teach you a lesson and she'll teach you in her world. And until you people find out what Mother Nature is going to teach you and get the Corps of Engineers involved and people involved and look at it that knows what to do. We got to clean the rivers up. Now, I crossed the Anacostia River. And we tight-shied at Anacostia. I had the federal, the state, and everybody come down. And there was four different, and WSSC. And none of them could tell us how to dump the water from our hole onto the ground. They all had different ideas. Oh, you can't, you can't put it in the river. Or you put the water from when we're trying to work inside. Or you can, you have to drop it here. They, they don't know any more than you people do, anybody in this room. I'm just as good as any of them. So what the hell are we doing? Just wait till the big thing hits and hurts everybody and tears everybody? That's what's going on. You got to get the people together that know what to do. I worked on Agnes. I, I started up in Baltimore. And we went right into rivers with our machines and started pulling on them stumps and junk out of the rivers all the way down to Laurel. I worked up here in Howard County. I didn't come over here at the Laurel Dam. But I, I fit I was with, was it there? But we went down in the rivers in Howard County and we pulled this stuff out of the machines and took it up and they had to burn it. And they burned. They had a spot. We pulled it and they burned. And that's how that went. And if we could ever grow up in this country and start working for a living, then we'll find something out and get something done. When people can get it together, we'll get it done. But you got to get it together. And that's that.
Thank you, sir. The staff.
My name is Erin Wilson. I am the resident manager of Riverview Apartments on Main Street. And I just had a quick question. I, of course, was there for the evacuation event, the one thirty wake-up call. So I guess my question is two wrong. First, do we always generally use the same shelters for pets and for people? Is that information that we can get out to people before the emergency happens? So then people, you know, if something happens, they at least have a resource and they can say, this is the map to where I can go. This is who's going to take my dog, that type of thing. You know, I, I follow phone calls from, as I'm sure everybody else here did, for forty-eight hours. You know, where do I go? What do I do? Who's going to take my cat? That type of thing. So I think it would be a really good idea if we had something, if this is information that generally stays the same, that we can give out to people before we have another event.
It's fair to say we have Cypress Street, we have City Hall.
Well, the Armory as well.
And the Armory.
Um, we can publish the information on all of our shelters. That's, that's not a problem. Um, the, the issue is, uh, we usually don't identify the shelter until we have an event. And there are, there are some reasons for that. Uh, if, if people get, if people get the idea, if they live on Main Street and they, they think that their shelter is on Cypress Street, and we have a, 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 a train car overturned, and we have a chemical spill that releases a cloud of gas that's going across the city of Laurel, we don't want people to drive through that cloud of gas getting to. So, whenever there's an event, we always identify as part of our planning what shelter we're going to use. So, um, you know, if we tell somebody, okay, well, your shelter is the Armory, uh, we might not be opening up the Armory because of, of the event. So, um, and we, we put, we push out information through our communications office. Uh, W T O P radio usually carries our information. And, uh, with our communications director, her affiliation with the local television media, uh, we, we get the information out through all the major networks. So...
It is fair to say that Kurt Royce will be trying to, we mentioned Kurt Royce, depending on the issue, issue we're dealing with, we're going to try and get resources closer to where we're trying to evacuate, if it's easier or less, the resources and everything else that we're going to back there to help pets.
Well, we have, uh, we, we have a city veterinarian, and that's, uh, Dr. Wachowski at Rocky Door Animal Hospital. And we have arrangements with his hospital, uh, to take animals. Uh, however, they're somewhat limited. So, uh, we, we have the wherewithal to set up very rough, uh, animal shelter. Uh, however, we rely on the owners of the animals to bring, um, airline-approved cages, because we just don't have the cages. We can set up a space. We can condition that space to put animals in. We just, we, I think we have, what, six, seven cages available to us. Uh, they're just so expensive, and, uh, for us to buy them and have them sit on the shelves forever, um, you know, they take up valuable storage as well. So, uh, if we open up our own animal shelter, uh, the, you know, we require everybody to bring their own cage, bring their own food, doggy toys, cat toys, whatever the case may be. But we also require that they have the shop records up to date. Now, if we open up a shelter, we'll have a vet there to administer, uh, inoculations if you don't have your shop record. So, we want to make sure that every pet coming into the shelter is up, up to date on their, their inoculations.
Thank you. Um, so my second question is, because I, I know that you, and I think you did a really good job of getting information out. Uh, I think a lot of people will believe that it's going to be like, you know, like you would have more information, but obviously you didn't in this situation. Um, is there, I know there's a general level for getting information out. Is there a resource for, for instance, someone like me, because I, I have a hundred and forty-four units of people calling me for information. Is there contact information or a resource that I can get? Not necessarily more information, but at least more detailed. I guess it's the same thing, but is there a contact, I guess, is there a contact that I can call and say, you know, can you tell me how long this, we think it's going to last, or...
Well...
Because a lot of people that call me, they, you know, they, when they see something on W T O P, they call me, and I'd like to have something other than, I don't know.
Okay. No, I understand. Um, with the adoption of our, our latest Emergency Operations Guide, um, one of the requirements the mayor imposed upon us was that whenever we open up our emergency operations center, we staff twenty-four-seven a phone line, an information phone line, and that's, that's our regular business number, three oh one seven two five five three zero zero. So, if we have our center open and you call that, that line, somebody's going to answer, and they'll be able to put you in communication with, with the individual that has knowledge or to get the knowledge that you, you need for your residents.
Yeah, I was going to bring up, you know, the, the, the app as well. Yeah, uh...
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to remind you, but we have a new mobile app, which is My Laurel. You can come on, depending what type of money you have, type in My Laurel. You can download that. That is a tool. We ask that, um, you sign up for it because it allows us to push information out to you as well. It's a, um, a good piece of information. It gives a lot of good information, but it's a two-way street. It allows you to turn in when you see something wrong in the city, if current government's not, you know, broken or trash, they missed their trash, if there's a police department issue, non-emergency, uh, you can turn those things in to us, and then they'll respond back to, 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 I think, I think, I think I've got a lot of our lives. But it's a really good way to push information out. The other thing is, we're working on local cable. We have done, um, we did some actual live cable shots from City Hall during the, was it the snowstorm or was it the rain? It's what we did.
Both.
Uh, okay, both. Um, so we try to get public works, police, um, myself and others to update, show what's going on. And then I'm planning, Audrey's working on it. We just relaunched our cable television. We're doing a lot of our local stuff. Um, there's also, um, Audrey has a twenty-four-hour tape line that people could call. That's another that we're talking internally here about, that maybe when we go into an emergency, uh, that number that you call, it's just a recording that'll tell you what's going on. It's mainly set up for the president. He is the oldest, anybody. But My Laurel app, I hope it'll tell people to sign up for. Um, the other piece of that is, we'll work on that. We, we put out a patent of information here, and one of the things that, uh, we're trying to do is move the apartments. It's very costly to do it because the apartments, you know, they can change them several times. Um, we, we brought a good thing to Christian, uh, wrote it down, but we, on that, getting the pets ready. My friend lives in Annapolis in Ocean City, so she has two dogs. She has a certain kind of evacuation prepared. We, those are types of things that we can help promote for regular area as well. We're in citizen, we're living in, it's the house, but no, I would say. And then when the emergency comes and becomes, the cages are all certified. There's some things, her worst, worst area of her, her dogs, which she has, she has to vacuum. Um, so those are things. But we need, and the other thing, I don't want to volunteer Marty anymore, but I will again, uh, we will actually come out. We, Marty will come out, uh, and they will actually get talks to small groups. Um, we've got senior citizens, done numerous things, homeowners, and, you know, that's another opportunity for, if you have a community meeting within your apartments, to be able to do. We also have our SERC program, which is all volunteers. We're always looking for people to get involved. It's a way to help emergency services really understand what's going on. Plus, our police alarm, it's a little bit different than that type of, you know, that SERC program and other things are there to really get people to understand. The whole process, not, tonight is to make sure people understand what we went there, why our decisions were made. But don't forget, these decisions are being made at two, three o'clock in the morning, but we're calling in resources, we're calling in volunteers, we're depending on a lot of those, those things. The people that are getting the paint jets, they're a little bit easier to get. Volunteers, we have great volunteers, but, you know, sometimes if you're trying to get them to work in different, you know, areas of the city, I may not see what's happening. So, uh, we're always looking for volunteers, and we'll come out and help them to take those questions.
Um, I just want to make a public appeal to you as a, as someone who has a lot of people that count on you for information. Um, pick your favorite social media outlet and then tune in to us. Follow me at Laurel PIO on Twitter. And that is something that you should encourage the people who count on you to do as well. If I tweet out something, you can get it and then retweet it to all the people that follow you, and this is instantaneous. I was actually in Michigan when we had a dump truck take down some power lines, and, uh, I got a call, I think, from Marty in Michigan. I tweeted it out from Detroit Metro Airport instantly. Um, so it's, it's the best way to get connected. Just fa- if, if you just follow me, then you can get people to follow you, and you can all get the information instantaneous. Everything that I tweet out, uh, or put on our city's Facebook page goes instantly to the city's Twitter page. So if you don't like Twitter, check the city's Facebook page. You'll see what's going on. Uh, I just did a post on a fire that we had on Main Street. Twelve thousand people saw that post. So, people are tuning in to get the information. You just get a couple key people connected and then join that network. Another thing I'd like to do is, um, beef up our mailing list of citizens who want to get our press releases directly. E- email me your, um, email address at info@laurealtv.org. I'll put you on this, on the email list, so you'll receive directly any public, uh, PSA announcement or press release that we send out. So, you got to get involved. You got to start a network, but tune in to us, and we'll get you connected. Just get a couple people following us, and you'll be able to get that information instantly.
One last comment Jeff was giving is, um, there's an alert on here in the bottom of the apartment that says evacuation underway due to long flight. So, you don't, and then you click, and it gives you a lot of information. So, definitely take that.
Thank you, Mayor. We all know Matthew Cook, chairman of the law board trade in the business on Main Street. Marty, you made a comment saying that it took them at least an hour to release the water. To, it takes them an hour to, for the water to be released?
To open all the gates from fully closed.
Okay.
Now, when, when we got word that we're opening up all the gates, you got fifteen minutes, most of the gates were already open.
Well, pretty much, I was about to say, pretty much assuming. They were probably already open when you got the notice on that.
Right. They just increased the opening on, on all the gates and opened up the last two.
So, it takes them hour for a, a little hour, an hour to open all the gates. How long does it take them to close all the gates? That's my question.
Well, it's about the same time. There's, e- each, each, each gate has a, a series of, of gears to open and close it, but ea- and each one is operated by a mule, and that mule services all the gates. There's only one mule on the, on the bridge or, or on the dam. So, that, that mule is moved from gate to gate to operate the gates either open or closed.
So, estimated time that the whole gates were open and closed, three hours possible? The water was coming down?
I would have to go back and check my notes. I really, I really don't have that information in front of me, but, but I, I, I see where you're going with it. Um...
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Evening. I'm Mike McLaughlin. Uh, live right around the corner here, so I'm not directly in harm's way of these water events. Uh, I'm on the city's environmental affairs committee. I have a keen interest in this, in this issue. Uh, and first thing I want to say is, given the damage that has happened and the potential catastrophic damage that could happen, I think W S S C's response so far in their absence here is shameful. They shouldn't be here and speaking to us directly. And with your guidance, if you can tell us who, if we had, also have to contact city lawyer or, or go through the county levels and work, work our way up, how can we best affect their response? Because, and the term we use in Marty, is it a pothole dam, are you calling it?
Potable water.
Potable, and you call it a pot, potable dam?
Potable water dam.
Yeah. So, if it was originally designed for that, I think it shouldn't. And, and you said it would take a change of the W S S C charter to now recognize it as, as a stormwater control?
We're, we're looking, uh, to amend their charter to either provide a state agency with oversight over their operations or change the type of dam from potable water to a flood control device.
I think history proves how...
I, I, if I could, I'll just say that when, when Mayor Mo met with Jerry Johnson, the general manager, he said that will never happen.
Well, that's, that's, I, I think it's up to us to help change it, because I think it should be recognized that it should be overseen as such, and people downstream, most affected by it, should be part of that oversight committee. You all should be, should be part of that. Uh, and then the last question is, um, has, has the city, have you done a historic comparison of flood events caused by local runoff versus, because it goes to what I think Jeff was talking about, versus the events caused by the W S S C water? Is, is there a chart or graph that shows which of these events over time have been caused by one or the other?
The, the Washington Urban Sanitary Commission maintains records going all the way back to Hurricane Agnes.
Yeah. I think that would help our case if we could show...
And, and that information is readily available. In fact, I think the report that, uh, they provided us after this event contains that information. Uh, there's very little information that we have at the city level relating to, um, flood elevations during events that were local runoff.
I think if we, if there's a way we can gather that information, it would, it would help us, uh, to show that over time with the increase in development and peruse surfaces and such, that that local runoff is increasing, and it's more, it's more important to then now classify that dam as a stormwater control dam, too.
Well, we, we are preparing to, uh, implement a system that will enable us to gather that information. In the capital improvement program that the Marion City Council just adopted, there's funds in there for a river gauge project. And, uh, it's currently getting ready to go to design. Once the gauges are installed, then we'll have that information automatically.
And I think it will also help us, I think, the city, the residents, all we can do more as far as helping control runoff. And so, I take the, the example of the Edinson down the road in Brentwood that did that, their Main Street project, where they did a, a really good job of, uh, stormwater control for that. I think the city can do more, the residents can do more. We need that data of, uh, local runoff versus the, the water to help us with that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.